The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Do we have any corrections or additions or additional consent items on these particular items?
Or deletions.
Are here a motion if we accept these changes to the official agenda and approve the agenda?
I would so move that we adopt the designated consent agenda and approve the remainder of the official agenda.
Second. We have a motion to second. Those who are all in favor say aye. All those opposed, oppose. Brings us through the approval of the Board of Alderman's Minutes of March 3rd.
Mayor and Board, move approval of the minutes with, I believe, the one typo that was supplied with Ms. Timble.
Second. Motion to second. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Brings us down to the announcements and comments. I would like to recognize Ms. Alamein. Is she here tonight?
Yes, she is.
Okay. For her patoon leadership status for being the first one patoon leader in the history of the Academy, Mr. Michael Round, who graduated top of their, or their class. Congratulations.
This is a large class. It had 69 graduates in it. It was one of the best classes that's gone through the Academy in quite some time. Officer Alamein was leader of one of the patoons, which was half of the class of 69. And Officer Round was third overall in academics and second in firearms and fifth overall in the entire class. So he's truly two of the leaders in one of the most productive classes we've had in quite some time. So they're really the city crowd. So thank y'all for what you did. Congratulations again. Thank you.
And our next person is Chris Brooks. Are you here tonight, Chris? Chris is our new receptionist out front and also our insurance clerk. So we're welcome forward, Chris. We have several public appearances tonight. This is the time though in our program that we have citizens' comments. We limit your comments to three minutes or we have the sergeant arms pick you up. Not really.
Good evening to the mayor and board. What, seven? My name is Allen Turner. Citizens, it's not electricity in there that we're proud, but we need to know when are the debates of the, uh, it gonna be that we, that we'd like to let, that reach out and meet the people that is running for different offices. We also, you read well, come great about sign. And we need some clearness on that, that political sign. And we also need the people that's in the motor wheelchairs and hop around at night. Can I see them until you own them? We wish that they would be, have some kind of reflection so you could see them and not run over.
Mr. Turner. Mr. Mayor, the only debate that has been scheduled that remains is scheduled for Tuesday the 14th. It's hosted by the Starkville Young Professionals. They'll be at the Hilton Garden Inn and I believe all the mayoral candidates will be there.
Where is it?
That's the new Hilton Garden Inn located on the bypass, Highway 12. And it would be difficult to walk, but I'm sure we can arrange for you to get around.
So who you are, what ward you're in, if you don't mind?
My name is Lydia Parks Gibson. I'm here on behalf of my mother, Elizabeth Parks, Mary Elizabeth Parks, and William Ralph Parks. I'm in fact, acting attorney, in fact, for William Ralph Parks. I'm here because my mother had moved on Harlem Street in 1958. She was the last person to build a house in 1958. The city had been charging her for water and sewage and she had a septic tank. And I'm here because right as, right now, the city from three years back, they owe her $404.66. That's just from three years back, but not from 1958. It stinks over there. They've been having to go to the neighbor's house and use the bathroom. It's bagging up. When you try to flush the toilet, it's coming up through the sink. And that's nasty. That's unhealthy for the neighbors and unhealthy for anybody else because if it's coming up through the sink, it could be in the drinking water. And we elect people to help the citizens of Starkville. That's what y'all get our vote for. Y'all ask us to vote for you, we put you in office, then nobody come, come to help. Now, I went to, um, over there and I talked to Mr. Box and I talked to Mr. Doug Devlin and I also talked to Mrs. School. And they said they couldn't come on the property. Now, my mother, oh, the city, they would stop at nothing to get every penny back. Now, I think that it's so wrong that they couldn't take out their time to fix that. Now, if they're not gonna fix it, I just request every penny of her money back because there's another neighbor right next to me at the same problem, but everybody else on the street is connected to the city. Now, I just don't know why it took so long for somebody not to realize that she was not connected to the city. Now, if it was any one of you all, you'd have somebody over there to get it done. And I expect nothing less than the city to repay her money back because you all would cut her off and you wouldn't cut her back on until it was paid. And I expect the same thing because it's a myth in the yard. And that's unusual for anybody. And I'm asking you all, as human beings and as citizens, to refund that money back to her, or to my brother who the house is left to and who he's living with.
Any other got questions?
Just to add, to Ms. Gibson, in your reference to us being elected, and that is true, but the first dialogue that you and I had about this was out front this afternoon. So I want that for the public record, that it is not something that you've been complaining to me about and that I did not do anything about it. And then I guess my other question needs to be to Doug Devlin, so maybe he needs to come up because I'm confused if there isn't overflow there of raw sewage coming from the house. Oh, and we, and Ms. Gibson is blaming us for it. And I guess in a sense we are, but then the house is not connected to the city sewage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just one minute. And I'm not pointing a finger at you. I said officials. I mean, everybody.
I understand that.
I didn't single you out.
No, no. I, I, I'm not even worried about that, even if I was saying it out, but I just wanted to make that clear that the first conversation we had was this afternoon out front when I came up. But, um, the house is not, what's the address again?
102 Harlem.
102 Harlem. Okay. 102 Harlem is not connected to the city sewage.
That's correct.
So then the problem then is with the house and the septic tank.
Yes, ma'am. Um, just-
But it needs to be connected to the city sewage.
Yeah. We, um, I had sent out an email on Monday morning, I guess, kind of explaining to everybody what the situation was. And we had discovered this when we went to answer a stop sewer call because we thought she actually was connected to the sewer. And when we found out it wasn't, um, we went ahead and put in a, put in a tap for her. So if she chose to connect to the, to the city sewer, she would have, at least have that available to her. Now, the question is, is state law prohibits us from coming on private property and connecting the house to, to our tap? And that's, that's where we had to stop. In the information I sent you yesterday morning, I believe, I agree she's entitled to every penny in sewer fees that she paid, paid in. And being in the situation that she's in now, I would like to see if we can approve that tonight during citizen comments. And then also if we can add it to the disclaims document so we can cut her a check tomorrow. Because this, this check may help her, you know, hire somebody to be able to finish the connection, get her hooked up to the city. The other thing we're working on too is we're trying to look back past April of '06 into the archives and we hadn't had a chance to complete all that. But if we had additional monies there that, that they paid in, you know, I'd like to refund that, those fees as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just a few comments. Ms. Gibson, you say your mom's been paying this sewer fees and for how long?
Soon, over in 1958.
You know, Mr. Devlin, of course, I know that you sure taking it all necessary reasonable action that you can, but I think it would be necessary and proper that the citizen taxpayer be refunded all of the money that they paid in because they have not been afforded any city sewer service. And in addition to that, then certainly 102 Harlem Streets, I think that area should be easy to hook up there and so they-
Yeah, we got the tap ready to go.
Right, right.
We need to move, you know, get her some relief as quick as we can.
So how far you think can we go back on those records?
Um, Mr. Vice Mayor, I, I don't know. Hopefully, I'd love if they went back to 1958. She'd do every penny of those fees. What I can do is if y'all will authorize me, whatever records we do find in the archives and can back up the records, if we can go ahead and refund her that as well between Alderman and Board meeting. And then we can discuss, you know, if it doesn't go back to 1958, maybe we can discuss some kind of equity in that situation.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing. Ms. Broo, do you think we can, we have the staff that can go back as far as 1958 to find out exactly what's been paid so we can make them whole?
If those records are available, I'm sure we could probably, I mean, we could locate the records and we can certainly put somebody on, on doing that, even if there's a possibility for capstone students or something along those lines. Thank you.
Are you asking for relief right now?
Yeah. Since this came up after the packets went out on Friday, we might need some more action to allow us to refund the amount. And actually, it was more than the amount, a little bit more because we had made a rate change first of the year. But if we can approve, get that on the claims document, then we can, I'll ask if we can get her a check tomorrow because she really needs, she really needs to finish the connection from her.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would offer a motion in this regard. I would move that the Board find this fact that Mrs. Elizabeth Parks has paid for service from the city not received by Ms. Parks in an established amount at the moment of $441.73 and that the appropriate fund of the city refund to Ms. Parks that specific amount. Should other documentation be produced of her having paid additional fees, then those can be considered at a subsequent board meeting. And that the owner resident of the house be directed as the city ordinance requires to connect to the city sewage collection system.
Second.
I second it.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has a citizen's comment at this time?
Chris Taylor with the NAACP.
Yes.
What happened is we mailed the request for an ad over a month and a half ago and we never, well, we never got, did the proper way to put it on the document. So I'm requesting tonight that the banquet at the 25th, I'm requesting that the city publish, I mean, buy an ad. We've been doing for the last 18 years. Full page ad is 125. The deadline is to 10th and it's 120 bucks. We didn't go up. Everything is still the same. And also, if anyone in here that's running for office, that you want to purchase an ad for a souvenir booklet, they'll reach thousands of people, they'll see me, and I would be glad to sell your ticket on that.
Mr. Mayor, one. I'm on it.
Go ahead.
Mr. Taylor, I know we've done this in the past. I'm not for sure what we've done, but the Board has done, whether it's been about a half page or-
Half page.
In the, in the past.
But we didn't go up on the price and name because of the economy and everything else.
So you said you said you did what we've done in the past.
Yes, sir. There'll be a $60 ad.
Mr. Mayor, as part of this, Ms. Vowell?
Yes.
Where are you?
I'm here.
There you are. What is it that you will be requesting next here?
I will not be requesting an ad per se. An ad will be part of our package.
Okay. So I will let that alone.
Thank you, sir.
I would move that the city place an ad of a half page in the program for the NAACP party banquet, that ad to specifically advertise the resources and opportunities of the city of Starkville and that the ad be cleared through the chief administrative officer to make sure that it contains those things that it should say to properly advertise resources and opportunities of the city of Starkville.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have anyone else that would like to take three minutes? Thank you. We'll move on. Our first public appearance is the Starkville Community Theater, Ms. Vowell, I believe.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board, and thank you for giving us a few minutes. My name is Krista Vowell. I am serving currently as president of Starkville Community Theater. I have also had the honor recently to be a part of an award-winning cast, and that is what I'm going to talk to you a little bit about tonight. For those of you who may not be quite familiar with the Starkville Community Theater, and I'm sure that most of you are familiar, I'll give you a brief history. We are in, we've been in existence for over 30 years. We now have made our home as part of our downtown. We have a playhouse on Main Street that seats 89 guests. We currently run a season of four regular season shows, selling out most of those shows in addition to a number of things that we do for children and for, for other areas of the community. But we do have four regular season shows. What I'm talking about tonight specifically is the fact that each year Starkville Community Theater attends the state theater conference. It's held in different cities. It has been held in Starkville in the past five years. This year, the conference was held in Natchez, Mississippi, and I'm proud to say that the production of which I am a part, Catfish Moon, won the state competition. So we were all very excited. That brought home some, some state recognition for Starkville Community Theater and it, it just really made us feel good. It made us feel good getting some statewide recognition. The next step from the state level is to go to a regional conference and competition. Of course, we went. Of course, we wanted to do our best, but we wanted to really network with these other regional theaters and find out what they do to make their, their theater strong in, in their communities and their cities. And we did that. We had a great time. We felt that was enough. We had a great time. We put on a good show. Lo and behold, Bill Ward's banquet came and they announced the winner of the regional competition, and that was Starkville Community Theater. So needless to say, we were thrilled with that being the, want to make it clear that Starkville Community Theater is only the second community theater in the entire state of Mississippi to ever do that. And this is the first time for Starkville Community Theater. We go now to the national event, and that is in Tacoma, Washington in June. It, we will be competing against theaters from across the nation. In addition to competing with the theaters, again, it's a chance for networking and finding out what works in other theaters bringing it home. What we are asking from you, the mayor and board and the city, is for financial help to aid in our fundraising process. We are looking to raise $20,000 for the trip to Tacoma. We're asking the Board to, to help us out with $1,000 of that 20. I know in these economic times that everyone's jaw just tightened just a little bit. I understand it. But from an economic perspective, we, we would not be here tonight if we did not feel that this request had merit. And I want to tell you a little bit why I think it does have merit. The city can now publicize Starkville as having a nationally recognized community theater. That is a huge quality of life issue. That is the, there's only two cities in the entire state of Mississippi that can do that. SCT, in my opinion, and in many of, of these folks' opinions, improves the quality of life in Starkville. That's, to me, that's a given. We've got MSU, we've got things like the ragtime festival, we've got a number of arts festivals and that type thing that really improve the quality of life of this city. When people look at Starkville, Mississippi, they think it's a great university town. What have they got for my kids? Great schools. What have they got for me to do on Saturday night? Oh, they've got a nationally accredited theater. The city of Starkville, as you all know, is a certified retirement community, and we're very proud of that. SCT benefits that community, and we know this because 70% of our season ticket holders are retirees. So we know that we're benefiting the retirees in this city. The visibility of Starkville Community Theater and Starkville, Mississippi has been raised this year by us competing and, and interacting with people throughout the state and now the region. And we would certainly appreciate any help that you could give us to form, we're trying to form a sort of Starkville coalition and a regional coalition to get us there because we feel like, you know, we could, we could have bake sales, you know, we could put on a couple of performances to, we could raise the money to go. We want the city behind us in moral support and in financial support, and we would appreciate any consideration that you could give on that. In sort of a thank you, this is where the ad comes in. We are not selling ads for our programs. We generally do not do that, but while we're in Tacoma, we will be using a program, the entire back page of that program will be offered to you, the city, to use whichever way that you, you see fit, whichever way that you deem as the best to promote the city of Starkville while we're in Tacoma, Washington. That is our small thank you for your time and consideration. And I do thank you for your time and consideration tonight. I've tried to be brief, but I tend to get a little wordy. So we appreciate any consideration that you could give us. I believe you have some information about our theater and about our, our projects and that type thing, specifically for the Tacoma trip. And if you have any questions for anything at all, if I can do for you, please let me know. I'm usually found at the playhouse on Main. You can hit me a call. My phone number's in the book and I have email. I'm very easily accessible. Thank you all very much for your time.
Do I like to make a motion this time?
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board, in recognition of Krista's performance in Catfish Moon and her performance tonight, perhaps, I would like to say first that the city of Starkville has contributed to lines, bands, going and representing Starkville, public school, bands, cheerleader trips, all those things where competitions have been won, there is a chance to go out of state and to indeed advertise the resources and opportunities of the city of Starkville and the advantages of living here, given the quality of life and a multitude of other things. I would move then, and Krista, I was going to say five, but you only asked for one. So I would move then that the city contribute $1,000 to toward the trip of Starkville Community Theater's winning performance team to Tacoma, Washington. And on that back page of the program, the ad that will be handed out, again, coordinating with the chief administrative officer to make sure it says those appropriate things that advertise the resources and opportunities of the city of Starkville and coordinating with our Chamber of Commerce Division of the Partnership to take things about Starkville to hand out wherever possible and appropriate, would move then the contribution of $1,000 toward this advertising resources and opportunities of the city.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Thank you. Get your $1,000.
Thank you very much.
Our next presentation is Campbell regarding a fence next to their properties located on West Main Street.
Today, I'm here in Campbell. I'm looking at my partners for my spouse who's at work. I am in Ward Seven, and the fence that I refer to is directed beside our apartment. This fence is about nine feet tall. It totally obscures our view. We have safety issues with this. Since this fence has been placed there, we've had two incidents where someone was in our backyard. I run upstairs to try to catch him. I couldn't see who it was. When he ran and jumped in the car, the car slid away. I couldn't see because this fence is nine feet tall. If emergency vehicles come to our home or call to our home, they will not find us within a reasonable timeframe. Because of this fence, you can't see our house. This is very typical of our homes. Now, my daughter and I, four-year-old, got out of the car one night. Man standing behind this fence. Scared the corpse would be eaten by those. If that fence had not been there, when we pulled in, he would have seen him or he would not have the opportunity to be there. Okay? So not only has it caused the safety issues for me and my family personally, it's also caused the safety issues for emergency vehicles trying to get to us. And if they failed to get to us, then on the court because they failed to get to us. And that shouldn't be the case. Now, the way I see it is anything that my neighbor does or any neighbor does to their property that causes safety issues, security risk, or cause my- property, that causes safety issues, security risk, or cause my property to depreciate, the city should be responsible for making those corrections to that property. I understand it's his land, but just like we have, just like we have the ordinance where you can't have a junk car on your property, or someone's going to come by a little blue and white truck and put a ticket on it, that should be told. That's for the purpose of not only keeping the city looking beautiful, but it's also for safety issues, this junk car, snapes and roads and so forth. But in this case, my family's life is at jeopardy, and since there is not an ordinance in effect according to what I've been told, then I feel that one should be placed in the fence, and I see there's something on the document about that. But, I also request that this ordinance that's on the document does not include this fence being grandfathered in for this reason. My home was there first, my family and I were there first, and the city should consider that fact. I should not be in a situation, nor should my kids, in a situation where we're uncomfortable. Okay? It, it's hard being at home at night and I, my spouse is not there, because this fence is humanless, and there's no purpose for it being there. There's nothing on the lot. Privacy issues, I have no problem with that, so be it. But at the same time, my neighbor should be respectful to our needs as well. Okay? And I feel that it's up to the city to make sure that that's done. I went through all the chains of command from my one, for all the women here, I went to her, I've also been to the planning code, I've also been to Miss Prue, and I was told there was nothing that could be done. I disagree. If there's not ordinance in effect and what's being done now is causing the safety, safety for allies, my daughters, myself, then the city should be able to correct that. It doesn't have to be grandfathered in just because they say so. And you gentlemen, ladies, you have the authority to correct that. And the last thing I really have to say about this, other than the fact that it's a public nuisance because of he is, and it's the only, it's not really not a fence, sir, it's, it's this big huge wall, and the wall only separates my home and the front of the road. It goes nowhere else. I was told if we decided to aggregate this property, so did, I have no problem with that. But the height of that fence should be lower, and looking at where the fence is currently standing, that fence more than likely is probably on our property, but I should not have to go and pay seven hundred dollars, is what I'm being, trying to be charged for this because of who this person is. And I feel like the board should stand up for me just as well as stand up for that person who pays a six-figure income because of how much he or she pounds. I'm a taxpayer, and the city is my backbone in this situation, and I do ask that you guys jump on this little sponsor, because I'm serious, it is hard coming home at night and we're there alone. Three women, three little girls, two little girls in the house and a lady, that's hard. And no, we can't speak to this person personally, so I have chosen not to do it again. And finally, I do ask this. When this is done, since this is on your document for tonight, I do ask that whatever decision you do make about this fence, about this new board, because it was brought to you because of this, unannounced to me, of course, but it was brought to you because of this, again, I, I, I interject, please do not have that fence grandfathered in, because that's a safety issue. And my life and my kids' life are just as important as my neighbor's life, just an empty lot, and I'd like to see my taxpayer dollars worth to me and my family for change. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you, Ms. Campbell, one question?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Campbell, were you ever told that the fence was in violation of any ordinance or rule or regulation of the city?
Yes, sir. When I first came to the city building and planning department, I was told that the fence should only be three or five feet high. So, I'm like, okay, great, they're going to fix this. This is, oh, wonderful. And then when I, and I was also told, and called to talk to Mr. Griffin, I did that, and the statement was to me, well, he can have his fence as high as he wants. Anybody can hide behind a fence, whether it's tall or short, but you know, I felt like it was just totally unnecessary coming in. You know, you can't hide behind a three- or five-foot fence compared to an eight or nine-foot fence. So, every time I talked to someone in position that should have been able to rectify this situation or giving me better information, and I'm not talking about my older, older one, someone else above all the one that knows this information, every time I spoke with someone, it changed. Once they found out who the fence belonged to, who the land belonged to, everything that I was telling them to begin changed, and it continues to change soon as they found out who that person was. And that's what I'm saying, I don't care how much a person pounds, right is right, wrong is wrong.
Uh, Mr. Flavor, you have any comments pertaining to the city's responsibility?
Well, ladies, I don't disagree with the report and that Mr. Griffin has provided, that we can't serve, I, I don't know what the relief she wants, but other than the fact that we can't survey private property to determine boundary lines, that's a civil dispute between you and your neighbor. And I don't know if that, that sounds like one of the things you asked for. As far as the other issue about what the report we've been providing is that the, you know, and I'm not sure what you're talking about when you say that, they said that for some reason this was in violation of the city ordinance, but we've been told that it's not.
The report that you have was given to me, sir.
Okay.
I, I sent a letter to the board.
Well, let me, let me take one thing at a time. The first thing, you, one of the things you asked for was a survey.
I did not. I did not request a survey, no.
Okay, well, you said that you felt like they were probably on your land, and you felt like the city should take it upon themselves to make a determination of whether, you shouldn't be forced to do, spend several hundred dollars, I think is the quote that you said, to determine that. Well, you understand that's a civil dispute between you and your neighbor, right?
Well, you misunderstood that. My, my, my point was that if it were for me to have to rectify the situation, whether it's on my land or not, I should not have to go to that extreme considering that the height of the fence itself is the problem. I don't care about it being on the line. My problem is the height of this fence. And exactly that letter that you received, the day I contacted this office with a letter, my letter that you put on the board, two minutes before they drove up to ask you to do any measurements, that I was told was done last year and, or months ago. Like I said, I had three to four different stories every time I spoke to someone, but that letter you received, you have now, that information was done two minutes prior to I got my phone call you on the board. Two minutes later, that's when they came out measuring, which is something that should have been done before, and I was told was already done, but apparently was not.
Well, you understand, Ms. Campbell, this is all the board has to base any type of action they were taking, is basically on this report.
I understand that, but I also need the board to understand this. We have the, you have the city ordinance on here. This did not come to the board until I started making complaints about the fence. So, whatever's on this agenda as far as how this is supposed to be done, it's new ordinance for the fences and so forth, and however that can be done, my, my request is that that fence not be grandfathered in because it's there for my home, that my family was there first. So, whatever regulations they're trying to place in this ordinance, that fence should not be included in that. That fence should be, the ordinance should be where my family still feels protected and safe in our home. That's what the ordinance should contain, not in order to satisfy somebody that's pally because they can't have their way.
I don't know anything about what you're talking about.
I'm, I'm saying, I'm just making this point. The ordinance should be able to satisfy us as well as empty lots. It's empty lots, and then that's your family. I believe that family should take precedent over empty lots.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. Our next public presentation is our Lynn Lane Multiuse Path.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I, I would like to, um, just not just to hear Ms. Campbell, I'd like for someone to look into this further, just to see what we can do if anything, and there should be a lot of mixed signals from her representation. Is there anything we can do further on this matter?
Well, we got, you know, we got a public hearing based on some of these things that she's mentioned tonight, later on in our agenda, and that would probably be the time in which to say maybe take that issue up. Campbell?
Mayor, Board, I appreciate y'all's time. If you know, we're here tonight to kind of give you an update on the Lynn Lane project, which y'all requested us to design for you, and right now, we're in the conceptual phase. I'm going to stand over here, hopefully out of the way. Based on what we've done since our last meeting, if we have held a public hearing and taken the same presentation basically we presented to y'all and presented to the public, taking a lot of their comments into consideration, but also taking the conceptual design process a little further so we can educate y'all a little better on the decisions we're trying to come about for, uh, this conceptual path. The other thing I want to cover tonight with y'all, first and foremost, is a tight funding schedule. As y'all know, we were put on hold for about six months. Federal Highway is going to require this project be approved to advertise for bid by September thirtieth of this year, and as y'all know, we're in conceptual phase now. So, it's going to take a while to get us, for us to get it designed, but also to get it to MDOT, which also has support on it, so Federal Highway for approval. So, decision tonight, as soon as possible, as is early. Also, grant scope modification. Been doing a little more research. We found the, the original grant was written in oh-six. Obviously, construction prices have escalated since then. They're better for now, and we're hoping that remains the case, but neither here nor there, the, the original grant that was written will not cover the original full scope. And one of the things we talked to Federal Highway about is positive re-scoping this project, and that's something I wanted to discuss later on, for y'all to take into consideration tonight. Obviously, I'm going to walk through the entire route, some of the stuff you've heard before, so I apologize for reiterating, but also come back to the new things that we've found, presenting the new findings, and you should have in your packet a summary of these things I'm going to cover. And of course, at the end, I'll recap, and also like I said, decision as soon as possible because of this deadline that keeps us moving, is one of my main things to request. As y'all know, the original path obviously is starting at McKee Park, follow Lynn Lane, follows Lynn Lane all the way to South Montgomery, from South Montgomery heads north to Locks Way, and then from Locks Way, we'll go over and tie in basically to the MSU campus at Spring Street. One of the things that we've found in re-scoping this project, putting the cost estimates together, seeing how far the budget's going to stretch, we're finding that McKee Park, connecting back to the park, connecting to the residents, the apartments that are along this stretch, also the schools that are along here, is basically the city's first and foremost best interest in order to use this money. Mainly being, it's more likely in the future to get additional funding to stretch this project out and actually complete the original scope. But being at the MSU's end, you'd have obviously their support, their participation possibly, and also it's more likely that MDOT would, would give a future grant possibly to Federal Highway in order to fund this portion. So, in re-scoping, a lot of the things we're here, I mean, talking about are going to be just this red portion, as you see, it's going to be along Lynn Lane and Montgomery Street. I'm going to start at McKee Park for that reason. At McKee Park, one of the things we first presented obviously is going up along the road, basically stopping before we get too far into the park. Main reason for that is one, funding, but two, another possibility for renovations in the park. So, this is not going too far in the park, but right now, crossing that into the intersection just past, and we cross over the ditch, having a bridge there, and following on the south side of Lynn Lane. One of the alternatives we had considered was actually at the entrance of the Sportsplex, having a crossing there when a future signal came in. As of right now, there's more crossings on that side, the cost of construction is higher and the safety risk is higher, so therefore, we still recommend to keep it on that south side. So, as you show here, coming out of McKee Park, we have that crossing there with signalization that will be used, bed buttons, flash warnings, things of that nature when crossing the road. Coming down the south side, as you can see, obviously, the easy construction going through the park, you know, this is one of the easy areas. Cost per, you know, digital things are in your packet, but estimated cost per linear foot, the length of it going through, of course, you can see that the cost just for this area, no right-of-way requirements, and of course, safety concerns, which I've already addressed, is crossing the road. Next portion obviously is going over to Lynn Lane and starting on the south side. One of the comments we had was obviously, what about putting it on the north side? There's obviously more residents, the density's higher on that side. Picking up there, the biggest thing is safety, putting it on the north side. Now, there's two parts to that. Cost of construction is much higher than the safety is produced by putting it over, not near as many issues on the south side, and therefore, we spent time looking at that north was almost a no-brainer. On the south side, east construction, east utilities, east of right-of-way, the safety was all better on the south side of the road, obviously, the top community back in also on that side, which our recommendation for that south side would be running on, on, on the south side of Lynn Lane. These, once again, to cover some of those, there are concerns on both sides of the roads, cars blocking the path. You're going to have that in the area, along this entire path is already developed, so along the entire path, you're going to have pros and cons for each side, no matter what, you're going to have cars blocking the path. Obviously, you'll have the crossing into McKee Park. There is some minor right-of-way required, which you'll find on both sides of the road. One of the things that we have to certify, too, that we do find wrong on the south side, that you'll find on both sides are encroachments in the right of way. Before September thirtieth, we have to, actually before September first, we have to write a certification to MDOT certifying that there are no encroachments and all of the projects are within right-of-way limits. I'll mention a few places that where right-of-way is required, where there are encroachments that will have to be resolved, but on the south side, that's where you'll find your, the minimal amount of encroachments and also right-of-way required. Pros and cons, there are some transition poles that would have to be relocated, but there's some on the north side as well, so really, it's a wash there. And most of the, you know, on the south side does not require drainage, which obviously is a higher cost. A lot of that can be put at grade and use the existing drainage that's there. Minor utility and roadside adjustments also. Before here, the costs, we try to break those down per stretch, so you can consider those at the bottom for yourself. Next stretch is where you cross over Louisville, and obviously, this is a wide-open stretch, and I can say it's a no-brainer here. The road was originally designed to be, in the future, expanded to a boulevard section being on the north side. So, obviously, anything that was put on the north side here would interfere with that, so that was one of the bigger concerns obviously we had to take into consideration. For the most part, this south side is pretty wide open. There are some landscaping, some trees that are in the way that would have to be moved or possibly go behind, go behind, right-of-way is required, if it's staying in the way, they have to be relocated, and obviously, that's just a cost for construction to be considered. But here, obviously, safety-wise, there are a couple crossings, but overall, the long-range plan, your cost of construction's low, and your future planning, if you go on the north side, would inhibit that as well, so we recommend obviously on the south side. These, once again, easy to construct, allows for future boulevard expansion, and there's always, like I said, with most of this, cars concerned blocking the path, and it's, you basically have a brick wall once you get toward the end near Montgomery. There is concern there being that close to the wall, but there is horizontal separation distance adequate according to Federal Highway guidelines. And then, of course, the subdivision people coming out, there's always concerns of them being able to see the wall. But once again, there are safety concerns in, in a developed area, always going to be there. Once again, stay on the south side will be our recommendation. Oh, obviously, the hard part is when you make the turn from Lynn Lane onto Montgomery down Locks Way. And when looking at the cost, as far as we could basically get was to the north end of South Montgomery and basically crossing the road, that's what we're seeing right now. Obviously, all our estimates right now have twenty-five percent contingency because we're in the conceptual phase, so keep that in mind. We're going to plan a budget a little high, hoping the bid's come down, obviously, our contingencies will reduce as we encroach it to a preliminary final design. But with that, we considered both sides of the road. If you remember, the first time we presented this, we were on the east side, basically that was because of the ease of construction. There were fewer crossings, but we also hadn't gone too much further to look into too, at too much else. One of the things, and I guess we'll go to the next, we'll talk about the east and the west. We've had both alternatives here, alternative A being the west side, alternative B being the east side. Both sides are going to have concerns of cars blocking the path. Obviously, there's more crossings with driveways on the west side, but you do have one major blind crossing in the subdivision on the east side. You also have a major cost of the subdivision on both sides, where you have concrete poles that have to be relocated. Once again, that's a major cost of the project, and we can't design the trail to go around them in any way because the right-of-way is tight there. So, when we got done looking at it, of course, you can see the linear foot cost of building it obviously on the west side versus the east is almost half. So, and more and more we looked at it, it became more and more apparent that the west side was inherently safer, inherently going to be cheaper to get more bankier bucks, so to speak. And so, our recommendation on Lynn Lane coming from the south side is making that crossing on the west side of Montgomery, coming up the west side of Montgomery as well. With that, and the question's been asked, which is safer, crossing Montgomery on the west side or crossing it right there on the south side of Lynn Lane? At that point, actually, that crossing, no matter which way you shape it, it is unsafe. But basically, you have to cross at some point in time. Here, crossing on the west side obviously is going to be safer going across that south end. It's a blind curve, no matter what, proper sign, it's proper light, will be put in place in final design, and it's also taken into account for our cost. When going up, obviously, we'd have to cross, the next consideration was on Locks Way. Once again, a tough spot. We broke this into two sections based on recommendations. We have 5A here and you have 6A, obviously, all along Locksley. Once again, keep in mind, and I'll give kind of pause here, the re-scoping of the project, although stopping at Montgomery, we would like to go ahead, this is our contract, and design all of it. You can put it on the shelf, hopefully use it in the future. The difference is, tonight I asked, no matter what, that we get a conceptual approval to at least go as far as the scope will allow. There's no guarantee Federal Highway will approve that scope. We've been verbally told they've done it in the past, there's no reason why here they wouldn't do it either. That being said, we'd like to also go forward, if we can, to get approval on our recommendation for Locks Way. Locks Way first, though, 5A and 5B, north side and south side. Pros and cons there, it's unsafe no matter which way you look at. You have a lot of blind crossings, you have a lot on the north side, you have a great grade separation on the north side as well, basically, pedestrians coming up, they're going to block the path. They'll be more concerned about cars, much less looking both ways for pedestrians and bicycles. So, with that said, obviously, the south side is safe. So, with that said, obviously, the south side is safe. There will be some right-of-way required on both sides, but that being said, the more critical side as far as safety is concerned is on the south side. Our recommendation would be is, after coming up the west side of Montgomery, crossing on the south side on Loxley Way, continuing on the south side. Obviously, pros and cons for each of them, cost of construction on the south side is gonna be cheaper. It's more wide open. Obviously, we had some favorable comments around the church, obviously, putting it on their property. They were more than happy to oblige us to do that. With that said, on the north side, there's several, several right-of-way issues with the apartments that are there, encroachment issues with the signs for the apartment, the apartments that would have to be moved. So the issues are fewer on the south side. With that said, our recommendation, and the recommendation not to be on the south side. Then, obviously, the next part, already being on the south side, I'm gonna take it back to one point. At the Veranda, at the neighborhood that is there right now, there are tight right-of-way issues on the south side. Fortunately, we have looked at the road width and the possibility of putting the bike lane in the road. There's a possibility you can do that. That is acceptable by Federal Highway approval without any kind of design exceptions. Therefore, the push of this lane further out, giving more sight distance for people coming out of the neighborhood, and also does not infringe on any possible right-of-way issues that come about. It's not required right-of-way at that point. Not necessarily is it always desirable, but it is allowable. So that's why, once again, on the south side, it's something that you can work within the right-of-way that you have, and another reason why we recommend it. Once again, not having to take, there are fences and signs and parking lots on the south side that are in the way, but other design methods can be used there and still accomplish the goal. But once you get past that and going past Lincoln, obviously, there, the difference is, is the great separation. There's not much on either side of the road, aside some concrete poles on the north side. On the south side, it's relatively open, not even, basically, hardly driveways that are gonna be safety concerned, and that's where we tie back to the university. So there, of course, you look at the cost of construction, once again, is much, much more on the north side due to the great separation, the possibility of retaining walls, relocating power poles, things of that nature. So it became a no-brainer, but the south side is the easier, safer, most economical place to put the path. With that said, and kind of a recap, I wanna go, what we're discussing is, starting at McKee Park and crossing at the Sportsplex on the south side of the road, Lynn Lane, and continuing on the south side of the road. Making all signal upgrades, all pad buttons and any crossings that are necessary across major roads. Continue on the south until we get to Montgomery, and then continuing up the west side of Montgomery, and then also then the south side of Loxley Way. Right now, the scope change, our design would go through the entire route. Our scope, though, that we would request, go to Federal Highway to stop at and cross Montgomery and basically stop at the church property. One of the things that we're looking at now, if we're approved to go forward with preliminary design, is to basically narrow down the cost, see how far it'll stretch. The train of thought being, if we can cross, and possibly then we'll have more money left and we'll stretch on further onto the church property, as far as we can go. Once again, your term and I being, as far as we're trying to make it, we can word it, the intersection of Loxley Way and Montgomery, in order to get that possible re-scoping approved. But as you can see, the total budget that's available, this includes the 80% Federal Highway providing, and also includes the 20% the city has to put as a match. That being said, that includes our fees that may be possibly used as a special match credit. Federal Highway will not approve that until they have the plans in hand, typically qualifies. That also includes your CNI, your construction engineering and inspection fees, your right-of-way acquisition fees, as a special match credit, which, under normal conditions, if you're approved, those will be allowed for your 20% match. That being said, that's the 1-5-7-7-9-6-5 is what you would have available right now. The revive, the revive scope, as we have today, with 25% contingency, is 1.6, basically, to get it to cross Montgomery. So with that, obviously, I want questions, but tonight, we'll field anything. I know this is kind of short and sweet, but I could spend hours up here going through the details of it, and I don't mind doing that. But at this time, I'll take any questions.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
I'm with you up through Montgomery, and the recommendation on the west side of South Montgomery are loud and clear, that is the safest route for us to go. Knowing that it doesn't appear that we have the funds to turn the corner and get to Loxley, and knowing that we have the right-of-way issues that we think we might be able to have clear, but we're not certain that we're gonna have those things to clear. I'd be more comfortable in conceptual design approval to get us to that intersection and not clear the other side, because I think I'm not yet there to say south or north, especially knowing the right-of-way issues that we have. Are you able to proceed with at least getting some of those answers without getting a board approval for the conceptual design on that section? Because I guess I'd like to hear that at a later date on a further recommendation on Loxley as we get to the right-of-way. But like I said, I'm very comfortable up to that point with the west side of South Montgomery and where else you recommend.
As far as our scope is concerned, all MDOT, Federal Highway is gonna allow us to technically be paid for as the work that can be built with funds available. So technically, Montgomery is as far as we're supposed to go. Because our fees were based on the amount of hours it would take to actually get this through the entire route, I think it's all fair that one or two things. We still service you at that point. We can put that off to the side, we won't have to talk about giving you whatever, you know, design policy takes that stretch back to you, and just, obviously, that's all MDOT's gonna pay for. That's perfectly acceptable to stop at that point, where we can, you know, pick that back up in the next one.
I guess my, I understand the engineering work may be done, just from a conceptual design standpoint, to get y'all moving forward. I'm not there yet on which side's best on Loxley. Because of some of the right-of-way issues, you said, are not completely resolved, and if MDOT comes back and says, no, you can't do what, you know, what you're recommending, then, you know, I'd just, I'd much rather have that answer before we approve which side we're gonna go to on Loxley.
And that can be put on the back burner, I guess, to answer your question. As far as where the money's gonna go, how far it's gonna stretch, as I said, up to Montgomery, that's really all y'all need to be concerned with right now, as far as keeping this project moving so you don't lose your funding. The rest of it, we can definitely pick up that later. I guess I'm saying, you know, just approve to that, not the whole thing.
Any other questions?
Of course, we could go ahead and approve a conceptual plan all the way through.
Yes, sir.
And then go as far as the money would take.
That's correct.
And stop, as opposed to going as far as we think the money will take, including all the discussion of north and the south side till later on.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, what would be your recommendation as far as that goes? Would it do better to have the entire conceptual plan, or just go ahead and proceed with what we know we can do now and worry about the rest later?
Well, from a continuity, from an overall planning standpoint, I would definitely think doing the whole thing. Having an overall vision for the entire trail, was it being y'all's best interest? Obviously, you know, we're here to do what y'all tell us to do. As far as the funding goes, we know pretty much it's not gonna stretch that far, unfortunately, due to time that's elapsed, construction's also gone up. My recommendation would be to go ahead and at least try to set that vision. But it can go in two parts, no doubt. To keep us moving, to get this project behind you so you don't lose funding, and to keep from, I guess, deliberating on just this portion for so long. We can set aside Loxley Way, and I promise we'll still help you through that, no matter what. All our opinions of it, we'll still continue with preliminary design on the rest of it. That's not a problem. In other words, to get approval for preliminary design, you're gonna go up to Montgomery, and still leave it on conceptual for Loxley Way. There's no problem with that at all. But I think to get it conceptual while we're still here is a good idea.
Go to 5B, 6A, 6D again, please. Let's say, for talking purposes, that the board votes to move on Loxley Way to the north side of the road through Lincoln Green. Is it then possible to go to the south side and continue on from that point?
Definitely.
Given the more open land that so forth on that south side. We keep the project on the north side essentially through Loxley Way. We don't have the right-of-way issues, the encroachment issues, the neighborhood objection and so forth. So it's possible to then go to Loxley Way and then swing to the south side.
It is, and what I would recommend is using a signal basis as you're crossing to get to that south side.
Right.
And that would be your safest way.
Pretty much, have to.
We're pretty honest with that, and that's right. Now, I will say, on the north side, you will have right-of-way issues, you will have encroachment issues on the side, just as you would possibly on some of the south side. And those can be worked through. I will say, one of the charges that we have before us, September 30th being the deadline for approval, we have to make our submission, and MDOT by law has 21 days to give us a response. They verbally said, no matter what you make an honest effort, when we get the final plans, we're not gonna cut your funding off. But our goal is no later than September 1st to get our, what's called PSD assembly into it, which is the plan of specifications and estimates. But with that, we have to have that certification of encroachments and right-of-way. So while we're designing, we also have to have assistance in acquiring all right-of-way that's along this path, and also removing any encroachments, which include utilities and the poles that are in this area. So once again, that's a time frame, a time frame to get all that done, but it's definitely.
So if we give you the conceptual thing to carry stand Loxley Way, we haven't had all those issues.
That's right.
Okay. Just to make sure we did that clear.
Mr. Mayor, Board, I would move then that we approve the conceptual idea as discussed going from McKee Park to South Montgomery. Then, at South Montgomery, moving from the original recommendation to the west side of the road. Then, crossing at Loxley Way, and if we're saying, well, that's about as far as the money may take us, then fine. But to go on and approve conceptually, then a switch from the original recommendation to the north side of the road, carrying that through Lincoln Green, and then a signalization to move it to the south side of the road into the university.
That's your motion?
That is my motion.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a motion and a second? By a show of hands, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Those in favor of the motion.
I guess, when he got through switching sides and going up one lane, down another, I don't know.
All those opposed, though. Okay. It passes?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation, find your own.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board. We're here to share a little information with you about a project that we're proposing. My name's Wayne Wilkerson, Ward Two, Rodney's District. Adam Martin is a student in our program. He's gonna talk a little about it. But first, Aunt Wanda Thorndt, who's with the Heritage Museum, is gonna get up and say a few words, and then we'll do our presentation.
John Wilson is listed as being here, but she's out, you know, and she asked me for everything. I'm the president of the Trinity Museum, but the museum has some plans that are pretty complex. She asked me.
Okay. Yep. We're gonna move through this rapidly in seconds, minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board. This is a long-range plan for the Oktobahaw County Heritage Museum, also given by the Landscapes Architecture Department. Just got an interview. This is, the site is existing today. Parking structure. So this would be the first phase we're planning on implementing. It's a rain garden just north of the parking lot. Actually, that'd be just west of it, excuse me. This would be the second phase, some terracing at heavy line, some terracing, grass terracing, some paving, and, oh, I missed a piece, this service access around the building. More service access around the building and more planting to the, to the west. And then, this would probably be the largest phase here. This would be redesigned parking, with some plantings, parking. After that phase would be, this is actually a pavilion structure with a green roof, and the boardwalk near the entrance. And then, the final phase would be just continuing the rain garden planting. And then, this is how we proceed to look in the end. And here's some details, if you wanna look at how the deflation basin slash rain garden would be working. And so the, these are the contributors. City of Starkville is doing the excavation services, and soil makes and gravel, and also we've done the design, and the student labor, or the labor will come from the students of the department, mostly the contracted students, and the Landscapes Architecture Department, and the Starkville Master Garden, and they're contributing. And while it's a good thing, the museum has some really horrible drainage issues, a lot of drainage, rain garden in the museum, as you might be aware of. And the biggest thing is that this would be the first water management effort in this for Starkville, and I think it might set the pace, we all think it might set the pace for just a new way of dealing with stormwater in Starkville. And in addition to those, that, it'll help make the museum a new destination for Starkville, you know, by improving their facade and use it for public. And another big key is, it will provide an educational opportunity, not only for the citizens, but also for the students here at Mississippi State, especially the landscape contractors, and also contractors in the county. They can come see this and see new ways of dealing with stormwater. And so we hope this works out.
Mr. Mayor, if we get this project built, I think there's a real good chance that we can use this startup to go after federal funding from EPA or from Water Resources Group. There's two or three grants out there that are really tailored to this, will be educational. So I think if we get this going, this thing can take off and be finished in a reasonable time.
Any other questions? So the city's responsibility here that you have is for excavation, which we have the equipment for that, and soil, gravel, and some other issues associated with material.
And we will provide the labor, we're gonna get the plant materials, mulch, everything else.
Well, as the liaison to the museum, then I'd be happy to both move approval of the master plan itself as well as motion that the board will all be providing kind of services as requested for the purposes of seeing that master plan enacted.
A second. Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, maybe briefly, let me ask you something.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go back to one thing, just real briefly, on the matter of Elizabeth Park's property. I noticed Mr. Devlin, the Devlin Oversight Municipal, requested that the sewer tap fee waived, and the motion that was passed should not include a waiver of the sewer tap fee. And I just want to ask the city attorney, does this seem an illegal problem with the waiver of the sewer tap fee per Mr. Devlin's recommendation?
No, Mr. Paul, on purpose, we could board, like, the man in the back, if efficient.
And we also have a precedent, we've done that in the past also.
Okay.
Okay. I would like, Mr. Mayor, just very briefly, I'd like to see that the board be willing to entertain or make a motion, or make sure the city board be interested in supporting a waiver of Mr. Devlin requesting. Mr. Devlin, which is the biggest part, you recommend that?
Of course, at this point, we don't know if it's a, like Attorney Paper said, there was another precedent in another case where we didn't have that knowledge either, and we aired on the side of a customer and waived the tax rate.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the sewer tap fee for the Elizabeth Park property be waived, like the representation, Mr. Devlin, that there's no reference to whether it has been paid. And I'd like the board to approve the waiver of the sewer tap fee for that location at One and Two Hollins Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Passes. Nay. Okay.
I believe you have students who don't answer.
Okay. And that might be questionable of the statute of law. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, and I'd like to bring to your attention, we have approximately eight of them, that we must go through here. And so we will get started. We may take a break in the middle of it, if need be. First one, the second public hearing, opposed ordinance, OR 0901, ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 54, Article 3, Division 2, Sections 5471 through 5476 of the Code of Ordinances, establishing specific mowing standards.
Well, first of all, Mayor, all eight of them are not my, are not my.
I know, they're not. I'd run you out of here.
You probably would, and so would the ordinance. This first ordinance is, includes proposed revisions for definitions to clarify terminology to assist the code inspector in enforcement. The proposed revisions mainly address larger non-agricultural tracks alongside major roadways for mowing. The fine schedule is in place and does not need to be revised. This ordinance was advertised for, it was posted on the website, advertised for second public hearing in the Sunday, March 22nd edition of the Starkville Daily News. And as of this time, we've not received any calls or questions from the general public regarding the proposal, and so I've left off to the couple of the aldermen, had some questions. At this time, I'd be happy to ask, answer, and question some of the aldermen.
Any questions from the public? Yes, sir.
I do support this, Ben, but I think the city should be held the same standards. Now, we have sidewalks that are covered for young boys, that's, and they're knee-high, my knee is higher than 12 inches of grass. So I look at the sidewalk from the school over 182, after Ernest Longstreet, Ernest Jones Street, Longstreet. I mean, that's deplorable. Now, if you're going to require the citizens to do the same thing, you can do the same thing yourself.
Don't disagree. Y'all have not been active in this certification, but they frank these things to our attention.
I brought it to you one time, I even gave you pictures. Didn't remind you.
You need to be active and stay on.
Okay. I don't want to use myself, but I can show you another place that I've been. You brush the drive and look at South Montgomery, Montgomery, they're that high right now, unless they're taking care of it the next few days, they're going to be that high next week.
I understand.
So let's hold the city the same standard to do this, citizens.
Don't disagree with me. Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Mayor, Ben, last time we talked about natural plants and natural habitats. And I know that you did some research on trying to find some compromise here, where someone can have a backyard wildlife garden that wouldn't run afoul of our ordinance, while at the same time, when we have large commercial lots, for example, that truly are nuisances. And I believe that you were not able to find a compromise, and I just want to talk through that, because I know you did a lot of work on it.
We tried to find different things. There are some programs out there, the new generation forestry, state wooden forestry, you have some programs, stewardship-type programs, that allow for preservation and things along those lines. But even, even those programs have some guidelines where there's an annual or semi-annual site visit. They make an evaluation of plant materials, in the case of forestry, mostly trees and the undergrowth around the trees for the prevention of forest fires and things like that. So that was geared really toward a certain specific item. I couldn't find anything that was really, really general, that could, especially even more urban, say, you know, in a city that would apply. So I, you know, I tried to find some things. The Audubon Society, they had some things for bird, for bird watching, but not really so much for, you know, of course, how to build a birdhouse and things along those lines. I think they do an annual bird count, where they get folks to go out in their backyard or in their parks and do an annual count for the, like, the bird census. So I couldn't find anything here. I tried to find some things. I know I talked to you a little bit about it, and I think you may have found a couple of things that we may be able to look at and review.
Well, and I guess it's the National Wildlife Federation has a program that does have a certification for backyard habitats. And basically, all we're talking about is, we don't, or my concern is, while we want to fix overgrown lots, whether they be city or private, at the same time, we don't want to have an ordinance on the books that if someone is using their backyard to attract butterflies or birds, that they would be, they would be running afoul of the, of an ordinance. And I'm not sure that we're there yet because of that. And I think we just need to work a little bit more with the local garden groups and explore this as a, as a program. But at the same time, I don't want this to be used as an excuse for something that is not intended for. And I know that's the challenge you've been facing, because how do you have something that's fair with the law, but does all that? But my concern at this point is, we're just not there yet. I don't want someone's current backyard to be out of compliance, and then, as we found with other ordinances, you know, them getting a citation, and then the, the city judge would then say, well, based on the ordinance, you're out of compliance, you got to mow it or, you know, or pay a fine. And still have to mow it. And then they have to come to the board and appeal that. And I just think, hopefully, there'll be some way to design that in. So I'm hoping that will table this for just another meeting to explore that late thing.
And you mentioned the National Wildlife Federation, I can look into that, see if there's something that we can come up with, and maybe have something that's applicable, and also, you know, close one door and open three more.
Right. And I know it's a challenge, and I appreciate you working so hard to try to find it.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, just a comment. Now, Alderman Cox keeps referring to backyard, natural habitat and so forth. I remember some years ago, in Reno subdivision, there was a front yard, natural habitat, much to the chagrin of all the neighbors, everybody on the street. And it went round and round and round. So keep in mind, just because we might say backyard habitat, it's not necessarily just a backyard habitat. It is approved as a habitat, because this was what one would call a front yard habitat.
And not to be argumentative, the ordinance is not just specified front yards, it is both front and backyard. And that's another potential compromise here of, you know, what is visible to, to the street versus what someone is able to access, you know, as part of their backyard and enjoy their backyard. And I'm just worried that we're going to overreach here. While I know I'm actually talking about wildlife, I'm concerned we're going to overregulate here and affect what someone can do in their backyard. So, you know, I am sensitive to what Alderman McGorn's talking about, is, you know, what's in someone's front yard. And the idea is, we're trying to fix it so that someone doesn't purposely leave your grass growing all summer, and the nuisances that are created from that. Yet, we don't want to, we don't want to throw out a good thing, and I consider this natural garden, backyard garden is a good thing.
Of course, to hide that backyard might take one of those eight-foot bits we were talking about earlier, if you understand.
Well, generally, there's a rule of thumb on things like that, and that's one of the issues with code enforcement, and also especially, especially with what is or isn't issue is, it's, most of the ordinances say visible from the right of way, visible from the street. There are those occasions where we have something that's not visible from the street, but I guess it's a guidance from the city attorney, if you're going to cross that line of public health and safety. If there's, there's water in the backyard breeding mosquitoes, and you can't, obviously can't see a puddle in the backyard, but it's breeding mosquitoes, then it becomes a public health issue. You know, we take action in that direction, using Mr. Devlin's assistance with that in his work.
Very good. Do we have anyone else that'd like to say a thing about this public hearing?
Ben, if you could come back with the considerations, could you also make sure to include accountability for the city as well, based on Mr. Mullenax?
I wrote that, you know, and Mr. Mullenax has brought it up with.
Oh, Dr. Mullenax.
Several times in the past. And like I said, Mr. Cox had brought up just recently about the Wildlife Federation, and I'll research on that, see if we can't find something that's workable.
Any other questions? If.
Let's tell the plot of street treatments for grass treatment, grass treatment in the street. I saw that the city had a bird, this, effectively, if, actually, ordinance, that you can do that in order, and that because it's undecided, because it stops upgrades.
Yes.
And the fines there for that.
Good fine.
I'm not sure that we have a $1,000 fine for that, but this is a proper investigation.
Any other comments? If not, I call it closed on the second public hearing. We'll go to the item B. The second public hearing on proposed ordinance, OR 0902, and ordinance repealing and replacing Appendix Act A, Article 4, Sections B, parentheses 1 through B, parentheses 6, of the City Codes of Ordinances, establishing specific standards for accessory structures attached carports and garage pools, and screened enclosures, high-con vents, and walls retaining walls. We're now open for discussion. Board? Do you have any comments?
This ordinance provides a specific standards for items, because basically there are only a few lines of text regarding accessory structures, and only two sentences for fences. At Alderman Lincoln's request, I added the existing text regarding structures in the memo, which was attached to this ordinance. One of the major complaints we hear regarding fences, as y'all heard earlier this evening, also sheds being close to property lines, or, you know, shading plants that have been planted, et cetera. The, at the bottom of page, let's see, at the bottom of page seven of 11 of the ordinance, we included a section, it's item number 13, this is towards the bottom of the page, that allows, it's retroactive for fences in residential areas. And I included that in there because of the discussion that we were going to have this evening, if that's something for y'all to consider. I think from an enforcement standpoint, and also from a permitting standpoint, it creates several problems, and it'll, it'll create more problems down the road, because where you decide to draw the line, generally, when we have a new ordinance, specifically the assigned ordinance is a good example, they go from that point forward. So anything that's there existing is allowed to remain. I know the general term is grandfathered, but the correct term is not conforming. So there is some language in there that if the board sees fit, can be included, or after discussion, can be revised or stripped. There was also some, some text added regarding enforcement, for the code enforcement inspector, and also for the administrative hearing officer, and there was an addition to the fine and fee resolution that's attached as well. There's six sections to this ordinance, and we left Section 6 reserved, and the reason being, you know, in order to maintain a sustainable community and for future development, I thought that we would reserve that section for wind per, that's something that we're looking at in the future. We don't have any right now, but down the road, you may want to look at that. And I've attended a couple of workshops where they actually incorporated that into ordinances down, down the road. This is the second public hearing, it was advertised in the Sunday, March 22nd paper, and at this time, I've not received any comments from any members of the public, other than just from staff members, as well as several of the aldermen. That's all I had to add here.
All right. Any comments from the board?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I would move that this proposed ordinance be taken under advisement for consideration at a later point in time. I have some considerable difficulty with the retroactive nature of the ordinance. I have difficulty with it still not addressing, though the city planner and I have not talked recently about this, but we will again, the swimming pool situation that we mentioned at the last board meeting. I just think it is not yet ripe for adoption, and would move that it be tabled until these things can be reviewed.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second for this to be tabled. All those in favor of tabled, say aye. All those opposed, nay. As have it. This brings us to the first hearing on amending of the city's code of ordinance to delete under Chapter, advertising Article 1 in General Section 6.1, posting generally under the chapter Animals, Article 4, replacing all references to health officer with animal control officer, based on what we did in changing the name. Is that my correct codification of this?
Essentially, these are housekeeping items that are before you in the next several items. But let me clarify the hazards of cutting pace, coughing. These are sections, it's Article 4, radio control, Section 18-106 through Section 18-119. And in the, I mean, when I posted the element of it is correct, that has to do with changing the health officer to the animal control officer, that's correct. I misstated the numbers. So with that correction, that's the, essentially, the goal in several of these is.
So you'll bring back the second hearing, correct?
Yes, sir, I absolutely will. But it's not, it's not health control officer, no longer, it's animal control officer.
Okay. Any comments from the board of aldermen?
Appropriate change. We'll do it every next time.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Good. If not, I call the first public hearing closed. We've now moved to item B, first public hearing on amending the city's Starkville code of ordinance as under chapter. Traffic of vehicles, Article 1 in General Section 106-3, use of coasters, roller skates, toy vehicles restricted to delete the sentence. This section shall not apply upon any street while set, aside as a play street as authorized by officers of the city.
Same item, Mayor, or same issue, Mayor, it's a housekeeping item, we no longer make play streets, and so this is a decision to reflect that in the code.
Any comments from the aldermen? Appropriate change. I bring the, any comments from the audience? Mr. Ballack? I bring this public hearing to a close. We'll move to the next one, the first public hearing on amending the city's Starkville code of ordinance to delete the following code sections. Article 2, Administrative Section 106-36, traffic division established, Section 106-39, drivers files to be maintained, Article 4, penalties and procedures on arrests, Section 106-110, parentheses D, authority to impound vehicles, Section 106-366, quiet zones, Section 106-408, fines.
Same issue, Mr. Mayor, this is all housekeeping items to be cleaned up. The police chief has, has looked over these items, and these are no longer applicable to our form of operation.
Any comments from the board of aldermen? Any comments for the general citizens? If not, we'll close the first public hearing on this, move on to the next public hearing. First, first public hearing on amending the city's Starkville code of ordinance to delete under Article, Roman numeral 12, miscellaneous driving rules, Section 106-354, driving through possessions, and when such vehicles are conspicuously so designed as required in Section 106-356.
Yeah, so this is, the 106-356 has been deleted by the board, this is where funeral proceedings were specifically marked, we no longer do that. So that was another housekeeping item to delete the reference to conspicuities that we made that required in 106-356.
Any comments from the board of aldermen? Comments from the general citizens, read. If not, I close the first public hearing on this item to a conclusion. Our next public hearing item on amending the city's Starkville code of ordinance to delete under Chapter 6, advertising Article 1 in General Section 6-1, posting generally in its entirety.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is for posting handbills, and Mr. Griffith, however, he might want to say this, if not he is, he brought this to my attention, it's something that we no longer authorize, based on a subsequent ordinance. So this is another housekeeping, housekeeping matter.
Any comments from the board of aldermen? If not, any comments from the citizens? If not, any comments from the citizens? Good. If not, we'll close this public hearing on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, this is a comment. When we go further, and I know we're all proud of our new codification of city ordinances, but could we please, if there is a common title, refer to them by their common title rather than...
Article and all this, yeah, I don't even know what I'm reading.
It becomes difficult.
I'll be happy to, since I put that in there for...
I understand. Secondly, I'd just like to say I'm sure I'm glad we passed that public hearing policy to require table on all these ordinance changes.
Thank you.
Whatever. This will be a little bit more controversial. This brings us to the first public hearing for item O nine oh three, a draft ordinance repealing and replacing appendix A, Article Four, Section One, establishing specific standards for outdoor furniture outside of storage and garage sales. Ben?
Mr. Mayor, this proposed ordinance provides specific standards for use of indoor furniture out of doors, outside storage in residential areas and garage sales. The intent of this ordinance is to help beautify the city by prohibiting the use of indoor furniture in outdoor areas and the elimination of continuous garage sales which seem to occur on an ongoing basis. It is hoped that this ordinance will be adopted upon the proposed second hearing on April twenty-first so that the ninety-day compliance period for outdoor furniture will be in effect by the start of this fall semester. The proposed ordinance has been posted on the city's website, was advertised for public hearing in the Sunday, March twenty-second edition of the Starfield Daily News, and staff has not received any calls, questions, or comments regarding the ordinance.
Any comments from the board of Alderman? Basically, this is in regard to posted furniture that is for inside, stuck outside.
Yes, or couches, recliners, obvious, you know, not, not outdoor, you know, yard furniture. Obviously furniture intended for use indoors. I researched several different definitions and ordinances to come up with terminology to try to cover that, specifically where the furniture's placed, how it's used, and also a compliance period so that things can be cleaned up, and that's why the timing was kind of, kind of worked out as far as that ninety days to have property owners who really clean up their property and, you know, when the students return. That's usually where the complaints come from, is regarding students living around town and, you know, the couches outside. We have time to address this and get it then corrected.
Mr. Griffith, this proposed ordinance also sets a time frame in which outdoor yard sales can be held.
Yes, sir. We did that generally because they're generally held on the weekend. They can be held any time, but generally they're held on the weekend, and we tried to put a time period as far as notification so that we can post them on the city's website, which is something new, and the main reason for that is the elimination of the garage sale and arrow signs that pop up all over town on the weekend, and generally Mr. Lyles sits Monday morning driving around town picking all those signs up because they've been left out.
Any comments from the general public?
So, what you're saying on the garage sale, uh, once the garage sale is finished, it's up to the Viva to clean up?
It should be, yes, sir.
Uh, if we have a garage sale where we don't sell, then we clean up so it won't be a nuisance?
Yes, sir.
It's not prohibiting you from having them, it's just encouraging one to clean up after they've had them. This is our first hearing. If there's no other questions, we'll bring our first public hearing of this item to conclusion. We'll now take a short interim break and come back with Mayor's opinion.
Yes, Mayor, I have a motion to remove the RSI contract from the consent agenda and approve it subject to the city attorney working out some final contract language.
Make a motion.
That is my motion.
All right. Do we have a second? We have a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay.
As we're on this consent agenda, to pull off the consent agenda board business, item C, which was the mowing ordinance, we somehow voted for that prior to our required public hearing. I move that we pull it off the consent agenda and table it for the next meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay. That brings us down, I believe, to Mayor's business at this point, and discussion for consideration attached for proposal for contract interim city attorney. Ms. McGorn, I think you had some questions about that?
Oh. Yes, I was. I was wondering about advertising for what is described as a contract interim city attorney. We, of course, are talking about the period of time from July one through the sixth of July, if we're going to do, and which, of course, will then be the next mayor board of Alderman's prerogative to do a city attorney hiring. If we're going to do anything, I would recommend, in order to help the next board alone, we might want to go on and advertise for indications of interest from the members of the legal community in a possible vacancy in the office of city attorney. Thus, indications of interest could come in, the next board would not have spent a week, two weeks, three weeks getting those indications of interest. Those would always be there, and then they could review, interview, do whatever they want to in terms of proceeding with the hiring of a city attorney should that position be vacant.
Mr. Mayor, one question to the general committee I made. And Mr. McMonville, would be your recommended deadline for submission of letters of interest in light of what you just said?
Oh, Alderman Perkins, to, you know, give everybody plenty of time and that type of thing. You know how these things go. This is the first meeting in April, assuming an advertisement could be placed next week early. Maybe the first meeting in May or even the second meeting, it may, does not matter to me.
Yes, sir. Would you be, I mean, from what I understand, when you'd be interested in the next board making the decision, we can just go ahead and authorize it, but maybe, I was thinking have a later cutoff time, cause that decision, as I would think should happen, should be left to the next mayor board, and with that thing said, I would think maybe a cutoff deadline of probably June thirtieth, July one, with those statements being said, I think that the, when the first, when the next board comes in, then it can make that, take those letters of interest into consideration, and they probably easily have someone there about that second meeting.
I have no objection to that at all. I was not implying that this board would take any indications of interest and attempt to do something with them. We would just simply hold them for the review and action if desired of the next board to keep them from having to then spend two or three weeks, four weeks, going through a process where they could move more rapidly. June thirtieth is final?
Yes, sir. Well, I would support that motion that we...
So, are you seconding it with your support?
I'm seconding a motion that we seek proposals for a city attorney with the deadline of submission of letters of interest effective with the deadline date of June thirtieth to double oh nine. Yes, sir. I second that.
Okay. Is everyone familiar with the motion now? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. If it passes, we'll move on. First item on the board business, Randy, I think you're up now. Consideration of a resolution directing the sale and award of general obligation public improvement bonds, series two thousand nine, the city of Starkville Mississippi, the principal amount three million dollars.
Mayor Board, it's, we have good news, and I think a lot of you have heard this, but we got six bids in. Three of those bids were under three percent. I showed the mayor some numbers earlier. The market right now is giving really, really good rates to very high-quality bonds and giving short shrift to those that are not high-quality bonds, and there's a higher spread than I've ever seen in my career right now between the bonds that are really good quality and those that are good but not the highest quality. And fortunately, y'all seem to be fitting in the high-quality group. The, out of the six bids, the best bid and a conforming bid was submitted by Morgan Keegan, and they submitted, the bids overall ranged from, let's see, ranged from a three-point, I'll read the first three decimal places, three point three three nine, the highest, down to the lowest by Morgan Keegan, at two point nine two seven. And it is a conforming bid, and it is a terrific rate. The resolution that you, I think all of you have the resolution that you read the title of, the resolution does three things essentially, a few cases publications have made, and a lot of trouble went to make sure that publication was properly made, and it was, and two, it receives bids, officially receives bids that the city received, and three, it awards the sale of the bonds as granted to Morgan Keegan, Memphis, Tennessee, which the bid is mentioned.
Mr. Mayor, Board, I would move then the adoption of a resolution directing the sale and award of general obligation public improvement bonds, series two thousand nine, of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, the principal amount of three billion dollars. Parenthetically, I would simply add, I'm disappointed that it's not twelve billion dollars at a rate like this, the Morgan Keegan, two point nine two four seven.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Didn't we build our assumption on a five percent rate?
No, I think at the time and all the heat of the argument, I said now's the best time ever to go after these things, and if, go back, read my quotes on that, Ms. Daniels, I indicated that we would never have a better opportunity to get the kind of rates that we would probably get. Did I not say that in our paper?
Yeah, but my point was if we assume a five percent and we end up getting less than three, we'll save tens of thousands of dollars over the life of this bond.
Oh, yeah.
A significant amount, yeah.
It'd pay for probably another hundred thousand dollars worth of streets, and we got to dwell, we won't go after that. I believe airport, we made the ration. Building codes, we need to, I believe that's the next item, is that what you had marked that we have to go into a resolution to justify your cost of...
You skipped ahead, I think.
What did I skip?
We're on page four at the bottom, E and F.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, excuse me, we did. We, F, I believe we deleted authorization, see with Lynn Lane, we've done that.
We made that motion.
Made that motion, we pass that. With item F, consideration of the attorney compensation for the municipal judge's appointment effective July first. Roy, do you want to tackle that? It's one you asked me to put on that here.
Well, let me say a few things here about this matter. If the board had not addressed this matter come July one, then there would have been no guidance, Miss Roy, for the city courts office to determine what compensation should be paid. So, I think that this matters properly before, at least before July one, so a determination can be made as to what should be paid to the city attorney effective July one. Let me just say one other thing. With all due respect to my distinguished colleague, a member of the bar, I did have some members of the bar, some of my constituents, ask me why did we not advertise for the position, the appointment's well taken, and, and of course, one thing I'd like to say that the statute, Miss Roy, you researched this, is correct, but wrong, allows for the municipal judge to be appointed or reappointed at the time the other municipal officers are doing. Am I correct, Miss Roy?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Section twenty-one, point three, through, it says.
Right. And so, just to, since the board's already appointed Mr. Favorit to give, have something on the record as to what it should be paid, I noticed that some information was provided in our packet there, and, and just personally here, and just looking at this objectively, this city of Starkville often, you know, looks at what Tupelo does, and of course, and that's a good comparison, and I see that the personnel officers indicated that the municipal, that there are three municipal courts that have four sessions there, Greenville, Hattisburg, and Tupelo, and Tupelo pays a range from forty to fifty-five thousand dollars a year for four sessions, and Hattisburg pays fifty-five thousand dollars a year, and I think Greenville, am I correct, will pay about sixty-two thousand dollars a year. And, and of course, the salary is cited here, I think, you know, the matter of public record, you know, for the municipal court here, I have four sessions and a little bit better than seventy-nine thousand dollars a year. And of course, Judge Ishi has been on the bench since nineteen seventy-six. Personally, and no disrespect to any, after whoever it is in the position, I don't think we need to pay no seventy-nine thousand dollars a year, but I would personally, more particular, be interested in looking at what Tupelo does. Now, just want to cover another matter, just for point of discussion, I noticed it was noted on our information sheet that, that we make him look at this as a promotional with a ten percent. Now, let me say a couple of brief points about that, is that, you know, I don't think it was intent of the motion at the time that the board approved this to give a promotion. The way that this came about was that our honorable municipal judge was on the agenda to give an annual report, and the motion just came up for the appointment, and of course, I, you know, I voted for promotion, but I think that, you know, that there was not a promotion, and then moreover, I think the personnel policy states that if it's, you know, that if it's, the new position is graded higher, and I don't think that's a grade to my recollection, and all of this, Miss Roy, for the municipal judge, so I think that the board, you know, with a lot of his appointment, you know, that Mr. Favorit's going to be in the position effective July one, at least until such time given that the next board decides, so he got to be paid something from that time, and without anything on the records, then the city clerk and the, you know, county and the staff would not know what to pay him. But personally, I would prefer a salary that would be commensurate with what Tupelo pays, that would be forty to fifty-five thousand range, and interestingly, Columbus is a much larger municipality than the city of Starkville, and it has three dates, three sessions, of course, it could be, the three sessions could be just as much work as four sessions, and Columbus pays this municipal just forty-two thousand dollars a year, but that's just my preference as I see it, and of course, you know, I'm more inclined to want to go with the range in Tupelo, and what that does, it just gives you a range and starting point, and I think it's commendable to even be, you know, in a position of, in which the distinguished colleagues has acknowledged, you know, to be the municipal judge, and so that would be my personal recommendation, is to follow Tupelo's lead, that would be a range of forty to fifty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment here, back to the motion, it was the intent of my motion, which Alderman Perkins seconded, to continue the municipal judge's salary for that period of time that this board has jurisdiction of exactly as it is. It will be up to the new board, in their reappointment of all officers and employees of the city, to decide whether any salary adjustments they might or might not wish to make.
Mr. Mayor, just one clar, I'll make sure we talk on the same page, no misunderstanding, no disrespect to the gentleman, three, that motion, to my recollection, I just asked the administrative assistant, did not set forth a salary. Miss Roy, is that your understanding?
I do not recall a salary set forth.
It did not. It was made with the assumption that we deal with what is now currently in the budget for that very short period of time.
Mr. Mayor, this is very important issue, we do not, very respectful, we do not operate on assumptions here, and we speak through our minutes, so if it's not in the minute's assumption or no assumption, we cannot go no assumption. Nothing controversial, I just want to make sure we're correct on this, I'm not arguing with the gentleman, we just work on this together, but this, I just want to make sure that we understand that we don't operate on assumptions here, you know, we only can speak through our minutes. If it was not in the motion, then that's not approved. That's why... our minutes, if it was not in the motion, then that's not approved, that's why I asked Ms. Rule to make sure we bring it, because it's going to be an issue at some point later, so might as well go ahead and set it now, but, so there's no salary set, and no disrespect to the gentleman, it's just a matter that got to be discussed. So, you know, there's no salary set, it was not in the motion, it, you know, the, the motion was made, we understand how it came about, but, but there's no, there's no salary approved for the position, we just need to approve a salary, either tonight, or we got it until June 30th, I just mean, if y'all, if the board wants to wait later, it's fine, but it got to be approved, he got to get paid something, but there's nothing in the minutes right now as to what his salary is.
There is, of course, a salary placed in the budget for that position regardless of the person that's quoted.
Mr. Mayor, let me say one thing, and, and I'm not being argumental to the gentleman, the point I'm trying to say, you know, in looking at the taxpayers' money, the taxpayers only want what is authorized by the board, not just because in the budgets, there are a lot of things in the budgets that money does not need to be spent, so, you know, we get to be, we get to be guardians of the taxpayers' money in that, we have to make sure that we only spend the dollar amount that is authorized, there has been no money authorized by this board in any official action for this salary of the municipal judge effective July 1. And of course, you know, and, and I don't want to make a second error because I should have voted, and I want to say this, I, I second the motion, I should have, not anything against Alderman, I mean, to my colleague, a member of the bar, Mr. Favorit, but I should have voted to advertise, and the only reason I would, I should have done that is because that give all other interested persons an equal opportunity to be considered, since we are, uh, looked at as an equal opportunity employer, so, at this point, I think what we need to do, about, just let's move forward, and whatever the majority of this board wants to do, we need to set a salary, whether it's budgeted or not, I mean, if, if anybody got a motion they want to make, I mean, that's fine, we'll, we'll vote on it if, if it's called the chair, but I think, but we, but there's no salary right now, if you want to do it tonight, that's fine, if you do it at the next meeting, but we need to do it before July 1, so, if not, it's going to be an issue, I mean, it's not, it's what pays, I mean, if it's in the budget, that don't mean he gets it, because there's been no approval for his salary, he's only been appointed effective July 1, so, that's, that's something, it seemed like we should be able to do and move on the agenda, and hopefully we will.
I believe your point's well taken, Alderman Perkins, we have approximately three months before...
Yes, sir.
Approximately three months before that decision has to be made, I believe.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
If you're willing to say, come forward with a motion, where the chair's willing to accept your motion.
While we're talking about salaries of this particular position, the judge's position, one thing I'd like to remind the board of is that when we added a fourth day of court, we increased the salary for both the prosecuting attorney and the judge at that time at the exact same rate, which was based on an 85 dollar per hour rate, uh, and so, I would think the logic would hold that the judge, whoever that is in that chair, is going to be fulfilling the same hours, and I think that an 85 dollar an hour rate is very good, and, and you, you probably would know that better than I am, good for us as a customer. Is that a good rate to get an attorney at Alderman Perkins in the city of Starkville, probably?
Well, you know, gentleman, for one, I, you know, I would respond to your question with this information, the personnel officer has given us some salary comparisons as to the number of sessions per week, and I think this is a reasonable approach to look at a salary comparison. I don't think that, in all due respect to my colleague, a member of the bar, I personally don't think 79,563 dollars is, is a reasonable amount here, you know, in all due respect, Judge Ishi's been on the bench for 33 years, it, you know, it takes time to work up to that, and I, I know Mr. Favorit's a, is a good lawyer, we've had a case against each other, I respect him, no issue about him, so I'm just saying it needs to be worked up to that, I would be willing to look at to see what other municipalities pay, just like we did back in 1997 with the Stennis Institute and other, uh, wages dealing with employees and what other municipalities are doing, that's what we have often done in the past, so, I would be more willing to look at to see what some other municipalities that are doing that have court session for the same number of days per week that the city of Stark has, and they are, uh, Hattiesburg, Tupelo, and Greenville, and those are, that's the information, unless we direct the personnel director to go back and get more information for, so that's what I like to base my information on.
So, is 85 dollars an hour a good rate for an attorney in the city of Starkville or not?
Well, I don't charge 85 dollars an hour, I mean, there's some cases I, I give pro bono services, I mean, some people in there, I, if I were to charge 85 dollars an hour if I walked out, I probably was spending less time at work, but, so, so is it a good...
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
You've been a justice court judge in this most recent term, well, you just started your second year in this term, you get paid the exact same amount as the other gentleman on the bench that served with you in justice court, correct? Doesn't matter that this is your first term versus their, however many terms they've been in, you get paid based on your position that you hold, correct? That's the same way with circuit, that's the same way with Chancery, and I think that, that whoever gets appointed as a municipal judge, they're the judge of the city of Starkville, that position, that salary is based on what our courts bring in on money, based on the time they spent, based on the respect for that particular position. I mean, it's, it's, they get paid based on respecting that position, and it's not a matter of working up 33 years. If we don't think the gentleman can handle the job, we ought not appoint him to the job. I personally have full confidence in Attorney Favorit's abilities on the bench, he was recommended by Judge Ishi with his full support, and I think we ought to, I think we ought to look at it from that point of view. As far as comparing ourselves to other municipalities around the state or other jurisdictions in the state, it seems to me that we're trying to do it when that favors the city's positions, but when we have employees in other departments who come in and want to do the same thing, but it's at a disadvantage to us because we're paying lower than those positions, we never come up with the funds to match it, so it's not like external equity has always been a major priority in this city, because we fail on so many levels and so many departments.
I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I would add just a couple of things to that, and certainly not argue about anything, my recollection is the city of Hattiesburg, in the day of 55, and four sessions, if I'm not mistaken, I think the city of Hattiesburg has three municipal judges, all of whom they pay that, each one of them, they pay that salary. Uh, the second thing I would add, any, uh, change of the salary creates inequity that we were attempting to correct between the prosecuting side of the municipal court, the judge, so forth, I think all judicial salaries are to be reviewed as once, at once, within the context of what is being talked about, and I think this is something that the new board can do when they take office, or at the adoption of the first budget at the new board.
Maybe if you want to say so.
I did, and it was basically that, it sounds like there's a lack of information and some pretty strong opinions, and I was hoping you have some guidance for us and try to bring us together as board, and if only you're coming earlier, we have three months to, to, to provide a recommendation, but we're just looking for some guidance from you on this.
Well, as I said, we've got three months, I mean, you know, this could be a call for the next board, or what, I don't think anything has to be done tonight, I think the issue's out on the table, and everybody can look at it, form their own opinion about it, but I think our colleague in Ward 2 down there makes one, makes an excellent point in regard to salaries and hourly wages, I remember the debate quite well about establishing one at 85 to 125, we took the low range of the, of the salary for that particular issue and that particular thing. Three months is adequate time for this to, for folks to think about it in the proceeding, a cool procedure in the future here. So, if there's no more discussion about this, I'd like for us to move on, we have no motion.